Mr. Striker?
Turn on the way down.
Okay, fine, thank you. I want to thank you for taking the time to be here this evening to present to the Albeville Council. Both stations, full in from the record and proceed.
Mr. President, members of the City Council of Albuquerque, my name is Scott Greenwood. I am a civil rights lawyer by training and profession. With me this evening is my own adversary and now my partner in working on police community relations and police accountability and oversight issues, Thomas Striker. I want to thank the council in particular for having us here this evening. The mayor has instructed me to make our team available to you both in these proceedings, formally, and when you require briefing on a confidential basis attending litigation in executive session as well. We're here because we're at the outset of a process. A process in Albuquerque that has led to federal intervention in the oversight of Albuquerque Police Departments. It is not an enviable position for any city to find itself there, but that is where we are. The good news is you are not alone. This city is not the first to face federal intervention, and it certainly will not be the last. But there have been so many questions about the process, what it entails, what happens next, that we thought it would be helpful, based on the President's invitation to address the council, to walk you through what happens. What happens in a patterned practice investigation is the Department of Justice launches an investigation when they have some credible evidence that there is a pattern or a practice of a law enforcement agency engaging in systemic violations of people's constitutional rights. That's the beginning. They come to town, they look at documents, they interview people, they talk to a lot of people, and ultimately they write a report which they call a findings letter. Albuquerque received that findings letter on April 10th, and on April 10th, I think, the world changed in Albuquerque because there was suddenly much more information than we had before, that your community had before, about what some of the issues were for oversight of APD and the issues that the federal government would like to have addressed. So they issue a findings letter. The findings letter is not a court order. It is not a mandate. It is not something that requires the city to do anything. But what it is, is the point of departure. It's where we start. It's where we start talking about what the universe of issues may be as identified by the federal government, and where we start speaking with our colleagues at the federal government about ways to address that. So what happens next in the process is this very week, in fact today, we expected to receive a draft from the Department of Justice of what an agreement would look like between the federal government and the city of Albuquerque. We don't have that yet. When we do receive that, that's just what it is. It's a draft. It's not an order, it's not a court order, it's a draft. And like all good lawyers, we then look at these drafts, and we exchange ideas, and we start the process of discussing with each other the types of reforms that are necessary for an agreement between the federal government and Albuquerque that will address the issues that have been identified that will lead to a pathway for success for this city and this community. That's a negotiated process. And when we're there, eventually, we will end up with something that we will recommend to the administration, and we will recommend to this council that you adopt as an official act of the city of Albuquerque to enter into with the federal government. And it will commit you to very specific reforms and mandates that will be measured, and they'll be measured by a monitor. A court monitor is picked by the parties typically. It's not somebody that the city picks, it's not somebody the Department of Justice picks, it's not imposed. The parties can't agree on the monitor, then usually a judge gets to make that decision. And then we begin the process, the tough process, of implementation. That process typically lasts five years. That's the baseline in all the reform processes that the Department of Justice is currently engaged in. Five years is the term of the agreement. Sometimes you get an early exit. Sometimes if you're not making a significant progress, you get an extension. Well, that's what the process generally looks like. That's what it looks like in most communities. We believe that there is the ability in Albuquerque to do something a little bit different, a little bit bolder, a little bit like what we did a dozen years ago in our own community. And it is to have an ongoing discussion with members of the stakeholders in policing in Albuquerque to make it better. So we don't end up with an agreement that lasts five years that has oversight and that ends up with the federal government going away and reforms that may or may not be sustainable. We believe that to sustain change in APD, and indeed at the city level, we have to engage the broader community in conversation, the people who are stakeholders in policing. And we call that a collaborative process. It involves having stakeholders in policing, stakeholders such as your neighborhood associations, civil rights advocates, community members, people who may not speak English as their first language, ethnic and racial minorities, religious leaders, business leaders, and yes, the police department and police families involved in a conversation about the types of reforms that they would like to see in this agreement, and the types of ideas that they have for their goals for reforming police community relations in Albuquerque. Yes, we can make, and the city can make and will make fixes to things like policies and procedures and protocols, but the underlying issue that leads to unrest, unrest in policing in the community is police community relations. That is a harder problem to fix, but it's a more important problem to fix. So when we talk about a collaborative process, we really are talking about a broader process to gather ideas from the entire Albuquerque community about what ought to be in this agreement, and what are some ideas for things that shouldn't be in the agreement, things that may go beyond an agreement that still impact issues of civil rights and crime and disorder and police community relations in Albuquerque. That's a process that we engaged in a dozen years ago, and I'm pleased to say it actually worked. We took a city that I and other civil rights advocates considered one of the worst police departments in America and turned it into one where allegations about use of force and excessive force and use of deadly force completely changed. It changed the landscape of police community relations. Some of the harshest critics of policing in Cincinnati became some of its biggest supporters. We've seen efforts like this in some of the other cities that have faced federal interventions. There are different models to follow. In Seattle, for example, you had a very combative police department that wanted to fight for over a year about what was in the findings letter. That's not ultimately a very fruitful process. And then they created a process for a community council for ongoing community involvement. And I think we're here to tell you the problems that you face as a city are solvable. They're solvable, they're fixable. You're in a crisis now, and that's understandable, but the crisis can be fixed. But the bigger job is not just addressing each individual crisis, it's at changing and really transforming the agency and transforming the city so that the relationship between residents of Albuquerque and the police department in this city by extension is completely different. I'll ask my colleague Chief Striker to offer a few words on the process as well.
Chief Striker?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the entire council, thank you for allowing me to be here. I think it's encouraging that during the entire day today, starting 6:00 a.m. this morning, we met with hundreds and hundreds of police officers at the police academy today, and we discussed with them the exact same process that Mr. Greenwood just described for you here today at council. And one of the things that I walk away from there with is a very good feeling and a confident feeling that your officers are still proud of the uniform they wear, are proud of their association with the city of Albuquerque and back there in point with the city of Albuquerque. And I think it's fair to say that they are objective about moving forward, and that's a key point in leading to the success of this type of a process, that they are firmly committed to this process, and they are firmly committed to their role of office here. And I think even more importantly, they're firmly committed to this entire community. That's our take from the discussions that we had today, and I would offer to you that with true support from the city, that the city of Albuquerque can be as successful or more successful than any other city has been across the United States of America. I think all the tipping points are lining in the right way. I truly believe that there is a process that we can engage in, and that we can see true success, and that things can get better here. And looking back a little bit and recollecting from where we came from all the way back in 2001, where Scott said we were kind of the scourge of the nation in terms of policing in Cincinnati, and it affected us dramatically in terms of economic impact, in terms of reputation, and in terms of image, not just in our region, but globally. I see you in the same place at this point. That's a difficult situation to be in. In fact, getting out of that situation is akin to pushing water uphill at times. So it's a difficult process, and it's a process that really requires everybody who has a stake in it to immerse themselves in that process, be part of it, take ownership of this process, and with that type of commitment, with that type of effort, you can be successful. We believe that we're seeing the basis, the foundation for that type of effort here, and we want to thank you for allowing us to be part of this process up to this point.
Are there any questions from Mr. Greenwood, from Mr. Striker? Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Striker. Thank you for being here. I think it's important that we have this dialogue, if you will, but it's even more important that we continue to be involved as we go forward. One of the concerns I've had is that there's been a lot of discussion, including journal paper reports that we've had some discussions with numerous folks, and yet I don't know of any counselor that has had the opportunity to speak with either one of you directly about the issue, certainly not about the ongoing. See, I refuse to call them negotiations, because I don't believe that we're here to negotiate. We're here to understand what the problems are, what the DOJ has to offer in their observations, and to take the report for what it is, a very detailed analysis of what's happened. So I think the city's position should be that we are going to listen, and we're going to pay attention to what's being told by folks who have done this before. So to that, let me just ask you very quickly, how long have you been in business, both of you, for this kind of business?
I practice constitutional law for 25 years. He's been a police executive, he was chief for 12 years. We've worked together on policing issues during 12 years of that time together informally. We formed a company a couple of years ago, specifically. I do want to mention a point, because it's exactly the right perspective. We're not entering, I mean formally, into negotiations, but what we're really doing is we're working with our colleagues, people who have studied the issue, people who have been here since I'm on the ground, work with the community, work with the city, work with the department. We're working with our colleagues at the Department of Justice to create a pathway to success, to create, to craft an agreement that is not just something that's punitive, but something that is effective and achievable. Because I don't want to look back at you in five years and say, you had this great opportunity and you blew it. That's not to your advantage, that's not to our advantage. I want your city to have the same opportunities to succeed that I think we built into our process a dozen years ago. And we did that by being bold. We did it by being out there, by listening to our community very, very broadly, not just listening to a few experts, not just listening to me as the chief civil rights lawyer at the time in town, not just listening to people who sometimes felt aggrieved, but by listening to the entire community. So we got everybody's input, everybody's input, and you can have the same thing.
Mr. President, if I could just follow up with another question, and that is, did you reach out to the city, or did the city engage the two of you?
The city actually reached out to us twice. When this process started, when you first got the letter from the Department of Justice, your former chief specifically sought us out and asked, what happens? What happens? That was a recommendation by the Department of Justice that they reach out to us. We didn't hear anything for a year and a half. And then suddenly, I get a phone call from the mayor. And it's out of the box for a city to be so bold as to put a former police chief and a hardcore, plainish civil rights lawyer onto a team and say, help us fix our problems, because you know what to do.
And so you entered a contract with the city, is that correct?
We have an initial contract with the city, yes.
How much of that has been expended, do you know?
We haven't built the city yet at all.
So we could carry the $70,000 for the next five years?
You won't, as a practical member, unfortunately.
So who do you work for?
We work for the city of Albuquerque, and we're appointed by the mayor and the administration. And the way I see this representation is our role to represent the city of Albuquerque, capital C, and the people of Albuquerque.
I'm hard to hear that.
People of Albuquerque.
I'm hard to hear that, because I think one of the misconceptions, or maybe misinformation, was that you worked, if not for the mayor, certainly from the mayor's perspective. But I want to lay that out, so that if that's the truth, then I want to push back, and if it's anything like that, I want to push back. But if you're indeed interested in working for the city, then this is part of the city.
We absolutely agree. And that's why, that's why we're instructed, that's why the mayor has instructed me to make our team available to you on demand, individually and on demand.
Mr. President, I have a couple of other questions.
Go ahead, proceed then, Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Striker, thank you, appreciate your words. And we've, this council has heard from the public for about three years now regarding this issue, and members of this council, I think we're some of the first to say that we felt that there were systemic violations of people's constitutional rights. But the venue, the venue for the public has been these council meetings for three years. And we have implemented, we passed bills, we've implemented reforms, we've made recommendations to the Police Oversight Commission, and really grappling with as much as we can do, we want to take action and do that. But I think it's significant to note that the findings from the DOJ report were many of the things that we've been echoing and saying for several years now. So I guess my question to you would be, the venue, the venue of the public to share their frustration or to vocalize their thoughts has been these council meetings. And you mentioned that you really want to hear from the public, and I'm not sure if even the administration has heard from the public like this council has heard from the public in that way. So what would be some of your recommendations of truly providing the kind of venues and the opportunities for the public to feel like it's not just at the council meetings that they're expressing their thoughts, but they're really being heard?
There are a couple of ideas in there, Counsel, that I really want to respond to. Yes, we're very aware that this council has been working on these issues for this period of years. We're aware of the efforts that you've made, we're aware that this is a special concern for the city council as the governing body of the city of Albuquerque. And you are going to be key to any solution. Because any solution that we, that the lawyers create, that the experts like policing chiefs and other experts the DOJ has, any solution that we craft will ultimately require some legislative action. There are some things that can only be done through this council. We can write them into agreements, but they won't happen unless you adopt them. So we really will need you to play a strong role in this process. So that's why I welcome that question. Now, what can we do for more public input? What you are seeing in Albuquerque is exactly what we saw a dozen years ago. The people, the constituency I represented, the families of people who were shot and killed by Cincinnati police officers, are people who believe that they were the victims of police misconduct, regularly came to city council meetings to share their grief, their frustration, and sometimes their anger, again and again and again. And that is important for them, it is important for you to hear them, it is important for us to hear them. But when we talk about truly hearing the community, yes, we want some people to have some venting sessions, because that's necessary, that doesn't always have to happen in a council meeting. But more importantly, we want to get stakeholder groups, when I say stakeholders, I mean groups of people who are affinity-based or associationally-based together, so that we have them work specifically on consensus goals for what they want to see policing look like in this city, and what they want to see police community relations look like in this city. Because we know, when we looked in Ohio, when I was with you, Ohio ACOU is its general counsel, I looked at all of the police agreements that had been put into place, either through DOJ work or the work of our other ACOU affiliates around the country, and what I found really sort of astonished me, is that most of those agreements are top-down, they're just dictated, as they were in the timeframe, negotiated executive to executive, lawyer to lawyer, and they left out the two groups of people who were most impacted by policing. They left out the residents of the city, and they left out the officers who would have to implement any reforms. So we thought it was critical in our reform process to have those groups directly, directly involved in community input. So we knew, by the time we went into negotiating an agreement, we knew what they wanted. We had that information, and we could make recommendations and negotiate with our counterparts at the city, with the Department of Justice, and with our FOP, our police unit. So that we could wind up with an agreement that we all believe would best for the people of Cincinnati. And that's what we propose doing in Albuquerque. So, Chief Striker, we talked about the importance of having line offices and having community input into this process, rather than just having it be the experts and lawyers. The critical part of that function and the process, the part of the process in identifying goals, I think came as a shock and a surprise to everybody. That is, is that the line police officers who engaged in the process, and the residents who engaged in the process, especially those who are most directly affected by police operations, both identified the exact same goal that they were seeking to begin, at the end of this process, and that is mutual respect for each other. Each party that was involved in this process identified mutual respect, and that was pretty much a wake-up call for the officers in Cincinnati, including myself. The people wanted the same thing. Officers and residents who seemingly were adversaries in this process wound up realizing that they had a very, very common reason for being there, and their efforts to reach that goal became quite rewarding for everybody in the city.
I think you've got a concrete example of that.
I don't want to ask those questions. I guess my question is, will you all reach out to, would that be a part of an agreement with what you're describing there, would that be a part of that agreement, if it's something that you would reach out to those various groups and have those kinds of meetings where those kinds of outcomes would come about, or is that something that would be...
Is it part of the agreement with the Department of Justice? No, this would be, this would be as part of our strategy before addressing the issues that have been brought forward by the Department of Justice.
And you can give recommendations to the administration just on how they would be involved in that process, I would say the chief of police, and the mayor, and the CIO, how they would be involved in that process.
And the process council members, the process council members is much broader than that. It is not just having a meeting between the CIO, the mayor, and a small group of people, or the business community, or the chief meeting with members of a civil rights advocacy group. The process is much, much bigger. It involves determining what the right stakeholder groups are in this community, if that makes sense, who really has a concrete stake in the success of policing and reforming police community relations in Albuquerque. It involves getting them to large meetings in large spaces that the city owns or controls, large groups, small groups, work sessions, so that ultimately they're boiling down for us collectively, for the city collectively, they're boiling down what their ideas and their goals are. So that we then, when we have the opportunity to work with our Justice Department colleagues, we know what those goals are. So it's not just, well, I met with 16 people, and this is what they told me, but we had 400 Albuquerque police officers show up, these are their concerns. We had 500 members of the civil rights community show up, and these are their concerns. We had the 132 neighborhood associations show up, I know you have a lot of them in Albuquerque, we had a lot of these people show up, and these are their concerns. And ultimately, we want to find common goals and common strategies, so that what ends up in our agreement is something that works for this city. It's not a cookie cutter, it's not off the shelf, it works for here.
Counsel Bennett, then Counsel Gibson, and we'll go back to Counsel on you.
When I met with DOJ, one of the first questions I asked them is, how do you see the role of the city government, we're essentially a bicameral city government. They made it pretty clear that they negotiate with the executive, and that's the way it's done, and that's fine. We meanwhile, I think, listened to this comment that we talked about over the years, and outcry, have legislation before us, including legislation that would alter the civilian oversight process for the police department, and one that actually has to do with the selection and service of the chief, that might go for the voters if that moves forward this fall. I guess my question, and I asked, we've got some opinions from DOJ about this, but I'd like your opinions about moving forward with this kind of legislation. I think the report, of course, stated, had some opinions certainly about the civilian oversight process. So given the fact that we've got that for us right now, would you suggest we keep moving forward with this and keep all of that debate going? Do you see any contradiction there, or possible conflict between that work and what you're going to be discussing with the DOJ?
A few minutes ago, I think I said in response to a question, we really will need this council to do things that are legislatively necessary, it's part of the agreement, when we're ready to do it. There will be a component of civilian oversight, and we want to have the best model for civilian oversight that we can have, for best practices, for national models, and that works for this community. And ultimately, when you're ready, when we're ready to have that discussion, you'll get briefings from us in executive session on what that might look like. I would urge you not to prospectively put some things in place that might be harder to undo in an agreement, but let me be very clear, you need civilian oversight, you're going to have civilian oversight, and we want to give you civilian oversight and work with you to craft that for a way that works for this city. So it's going to happen. So you should continue to have the conversations.
Mr. President, thank you. And yeah, just to be clear, active legislation is before the council at this time, and there's no shortage of opinions about what's right or wrong within that legislation. It's based on the original oversight report, a previous report that we had, I'm sure you've heard of it, the Walker-Linnae Report, very much aligned with what those recommendations were, how many years ago? Well, well over a decade ago, 15 years ago. So my inclination, you know, unless somebody convinced me otherwise, is we should continue to have that legislation out there for debate. I hear what you're saying, maybe we shouldn't be immediately enacting it, but I certainly think that there's a lot of interest in the public about content of that legislation responding to it by the counselors, Gargano and Winter. And so I just kind of really wanted to get that set, but I did hear, I think, that a suggestion that we might not want to put it in final form until such time as your negotiations are completed.
In a number of cities that have had MOAs or consent decrees, where there's been a change to civilian oversight, what's happened towards the tail end of the process is the lawyers, the legal team, will meet with council members in executive session and tell you what we think needs to go in to your ordinance, and then you're the legislators, you write your ordinance. And if it's something that's then consistent with what we think our colleagues from the DOJ would accept, then that would be something we would want a green light for the council to move forward on. But you will end up with, you're going to end up with a great civilian oversight model, I am confident. I would count on it.
Councilman Gibson, and then Councilman President Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I do have a couple of questions. What other cities have you worked together in? And I'll let you answer that first.
Most recently, Miami Beach, Florida, we worked there, we've also been to work with Seattle, Washington.
And how, I assume that you've left their feeling, you know, successful, that you were able to help their police departments?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
How would you measure that success?
Different cities are at different stages in their processes. For example, Spokane, Washington, is a city we worked very closely with last year. Spokane is involved with us, they have an agreement with the Justice Department, that's through the cops office of the Justice Department. They actually call that a collaborative agreement, because it's modeled after the work that we did in Cincinnati. It's where the city has a direct stake in deciding what its reforms are going to be, and it's setting goals for itself. So it's more of a form of technical assistance and some oversight, rather than the model I think we're looking at here in Albuquerque. So we work with Spokane's on their implementation, and I think they've been very pleased. And I know we've given the city attorney those references with the judges we've worked with, and the chiefs we've worked with, with the city governments that we've worked with. This is an achievable process in Albuquerque. I wouldn't be here, and Chief Striker wouldn't be here, if we didn't think that you could do exactly what we did and exactly what some of those cities have done. Las Vegas, Nevada, is another city that we've done a little bit of work with, and they're also in a collaborative model right now with the cops office. And I think they're going to have success too, because they also were a department that had allegations of excessive force, of unauthorized shootings, and they were able, they were able to identify those problems themselves and work out an agreement with the cops office to address those things.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see some, one of the things that, some of the things we're looking at as a council, and the rewrite of the ordinance about creating civilian oversight, I see there's a potential for a conflict with what we think could be correct, and what the DOJ might want, with the collective bargaining agreement. What trumps?
Federal law trumps. Federal law trumps, and even, I'm just going to be very blunt to the council, you deserve our unfiltered advice. The agreement that you reach with the Justice Department will trump. That said, of course, we need the officers of APD. You need the officers of APD. It's incumbent on the city and the administration to be fair with the officers of APD. And ultimately, when we're through with this process, I expect that there will be a resolution of the outstanding issues between APD officers and the administration. We owe them no less.
Thank you.
Councilor Harris, and then Councilwoman...
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, sir. I just want to be clear on this issue about which trumps, because I heard about this in terms of collective bargaining agreement and any consent decree for the law, but it's my concern that if we have a collective bargaining agreement that's in place, and then we have a collective bargaining group, sorry, let's start again, we have a collective bargaining agreement with the police officers association, and then we have a consent decree that's signed by a federal judge, I think the easy answer is the federal court decision trumps the collective bargaining agreement or something like that, but I think the more difficult answer is how do we unwind that? And at that point in time, we may have to find our way out of it. It just doesn't, I mean, in other words, the collective bargaining group just doesn't go away, there would be some order that the city might have to do to make it go away, which might cost you a lot of money. Was my analysis correct?
The council member is correct, and if you want a more detailed legal analysis, we would have to do that in executive session. I would just say, it's not inconceivable that you may have some issue that comes up in this process, and we're all going to have to work our way through that collectively. And we have to work in good, when I say we represent the city of Albuquerque, including all of you, the elected representatives of the people, the population, that also means we represent the community of Albuquerque, and we've got to get this right, and you really need not just an agreement with the Justice Department, you need equity and fairness for your officers as well. And so we want their voices to be heard, and I know this council will do the right thing when it comes to them as well.
Okay, I just want to be clear that a consent decree is not automatically surgically allowed provision for...
Correct, correct.
And something else that came up, and I think, looking at this, this is good, but perhaps you can help me with this, is that, I mean, police officers, when they are considering what force to use, I mean, don't they have to be aware of and respecting the公民's constitutional rights?
We require them to by law, and we require them to use them morally, legally, and ethically. They deserve that, and the community deserves that. And they deserve the best possible training so that they know what people's constitutional rights are, because constitutional policing and effective policing are not only not incompatible, they go hand in hand.
So our police officers essentially make the decisions of a constitutional magnitude very well?
That's always an opportunity for them, each and every day, and each and every radio run, each and every contact they have with a citizen, yes, there was the opportunity there generally to make a constitutional decision.
And... Councilwoman...
Thank you, Mr. President. To that point, it seems like oaths that are taken by police officers, we take oaths that say very directly that we will uphold the Constitution of the United States. So that's already settled, you know, and that we can bargain that way collectively or otherwise.
Speaking from our experience, that was the very first paragraph in our consent decree, that the police department slash City of Cincinnati agrees to engage in constitutional policing. The oath of office is disregarded, as far as I'm concerned, because it was as though it was not theirs. I don't know if the Department of Justice would still conduct themselves in that fashion, but they may. It's, my thought is, it's a method for them to reinforce the fact that this is an established goal, an established demand by law for all police officers throughout the United States. Part of the answer to the question is how we set expectations in this city for how this process goes and how your officers are going to implement it. Officers are expected to know what people's constitutional rights are. And we as a city, and APD leadership, as command staff, and the administration, and the city, you have the responsibility to make sure that your officers are not just minimally trained, but they are trained to the fullest extent that we can provide on protecting people's civil rights, and how to protect civil rights and civil liberties and do effective policing. They need the training, they require the training, part of the process will be to provide them as much training as they absolutely need.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just read very quickly, quote, "The public is demanding that we find ways to enforce the laws that do not violate standards of decency and fairness. All of this criminal justice responsibility must continually examine and reexamine every aspect of our work to make certain it is fair as well as legal. There is no person who should be immune from criticism, and no practice that should be shielded from healthy skepticism." Can you imagine that was by William Sacksby, Attorney General in 1974? So these things have been instilled, have been modified for years, in 1976 probably. So no one can say that it's something that is new or something that's done, we should train people to understand. That should be performed, that should be something that anyone who is in public service should understand. So constitutionality aside, everybody should know that the whole sense of fairness is paramount in any kind of exchange, whether it be at least the civilian citizen or chief with subordinates, anyone needs to know that that's the function and that's the conduct that's expected. But really, what I wanted to point out more so than that, is that I haven't heard really a commitment from yourselves, and I haven't heard it from the administration, that the public will be engaged. I heard a lot about how we're going to listen to the public, we're going to have listening sessions, but I haven't really heard anyone say the public will have a forum in which they ask the questions and they expect answers, not some kind of record tape. I haven't also heard that it's going to be a public-directed discussion. That's the kind of thing that I think we need to set up, so that the public knows that they're there to tell us, and they have here, but also tells you folks what they think needs to be done, not the other way around. So I wanted to hear what happened.
You have our commitment. A re-described as a collaborative process is fully engaging of the community. It involves the whole community, not handpicked sectors of the community, not people who are identified by one office or another, by the administration or by the department. It really is a very broad process, and we'll be working with the human relations group of the city to develop, because they've already been doing some of this work on issues of mental health. So we're going to be working with them on some of the logistics of doing large-scale public meetings to get exactly this type of input. So you have our commitment of that.
Thank you, and, Mr. President, we don't have to be very far to find out who are the people who are really involved, because they've been coming here for two and a half years. So all we have to do is, we play tapes to find out who they are for other, for various reasons, so we can probably play those same tapes to find out who they are and who we need to be talking to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let me just begin by saying that I have been impressed by what you have said this evening, and most importantly, is that you are going to involve the community. You've given that community to the community. Many members of this community that have been here for the last four years need to be engaged and be involved in these issues. I was also very impressed when you stated that you were here this morning at 6:00, meeting with several of the police officers in the community. They need to be engaged, they need to be involved. I believe after the Department of Justice came out with the report, that our Albuquerque Police Department has been critically wounded by what has taken place, and we need to work with you, with the community, with the administration, to assure that we are making the changes of, we'll restore confidence in the women that serve our community. I think it's vitally important. But again, I would hope that you would also be back here addressing the council. I know that one of the statements was made, that the initial contract was signed, that there may be future contracts in place, based on the timeframe that you were here. I met also last week with the Department of Justice, and one of the statements that was sent to me and to the group that I was with, that they were trying to expedite this process. I think it needs to be expedited, but at the same time, I think we need to do the job properly to ignite. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Thanks for your time, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, members of the council.
Also, let's proceed to the next item on the agenda, economic development. There is no agenda item for economic development this evening. Have you answered questions and answers? Councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Councilor...
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. My question to the administration...